Battery out.
On ready, and you carry on.
Well, I suppose if it gets
I wouldn't put my
If it starts smoking, you start yelling.
Well, I guess they probably won't need to yell. People probably yell for you.
Yeah, you know, when they have they have the Hajj in Saudi Arabia. And there's been people that were caught cooking in the aisle.
I had somebody sitting next to me who was cooking. She had a little sterno stove.
Yeah.
She was in the audience. She was at least definitely the type of outfit that I kind of thought.
We were taking Terry's name in vain.
Again?
We figured we figured
Never.
We figured you weren't going to be here till
That's my old reputation.
Okay.
Do we need one more?
Peter said we could call a call.
Yeah, but his note seems like that. But I think given all the Yeah, why don't we just wait until somebody shows up? Yeah. Fall away.
Exile.
For a reason. Sounds like
Can you do it remotely?
Yes.
No.
Is he not feeling well?
No, he had a project and I guess he had a deadline and he was really having to put the extra time in for it. So he asked if he could have a get out of jail free card for this one. But he also said that if we needed him to come in, he would.
Oh.
But Sandy and Mike aren't here. I guess we need him to
I guess we do, yeah.
Yeah. So he was over at
Over at the beach.
Yeah, he's at the Del Monte Beach community, so
Ten minutes away.
Yeah, or does it his office is on near the airport, isn't it?
I'm not sure where, yeah.
Was here.
Last week, I had a hearing in Pacific Grove at three. And I was second on the agenda. And that's why I was late because I had to run over here after that. It's weird because I didn't, you know, you never know. Sometimes you get stuck on an hour on top on an item that you don't really expect to spend that much time.
Yeah, there's a lot of public comment or
Angry neighbors, all that stuff.
Yeah, or just somebody who, you know, the
I've been trapped in the audience in Carmel. Where the guy sitting right next to me was was Kibitzing.
Carmel definitely gets the prize. The most
They're brutal. We know we know the guy who's who used to be a engineers engineering. And he said, these these people are brutal.
Oh, yeah.
Jim Cullen.
Oh, yeah.
You know, Jim.
Well, it's kind of less the, you know, the citizenry kind of expects that over there.
Yeah, it's 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 a blood sport.
We're like peaceful over here. I prepare some.
Because we used to we used to have a group that was Cullen and then Steve Steve Laker from PG and in in Carroll. And so they they would they would gossip about how awful everything is.
Yeah. Yeah, few down. Erica, could you please do a roll call vote and let people know how to get in touch with us?
Sure. First, I'll go ahead and announce the commissioner's absent. We have Commissioner Brassfield and Commissioner Freeman absent. Roll call vote, Chair Bluth.
Here.
I mean, attendance, sorry. Vice Chair Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
Great. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. Remote commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend keeping phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Thanks, Erica. So the consent agenda looks like only the minutes, May 27. Any issues on the minutes?
No.
Anybody in chambers have any issues on the consent agenda? No, anybody online, Erica?
There are no hands raised.
Um, do we have a motion on the minutes?
Sure, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda with the minutes of the May 27, 25. Plan a commission here.
Thanks, Jerry. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Can you please do a roll call for us, Erica?
Sure, Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Great, the minutes have been approved.
Um, does anybody in chambers have any comments on issues not on our agenda today? Nope. Anybody online, Erica?
I see three attendees online. There are no hands raised.
Okay, why don't we pull it back? We'll move on to the public hearings items. Item number three, recommend that City Council amend chapters 33 and chapters 38 of the Monterey City Code to implement the provisions of the California Senate Bill 9 and Housing Element Programs A through J, allowing ministerial approval of qualifying residential developments and lots splits. For the end, did you have a presentation for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Fernando Roveri, Principal Planner in the City of Monterey. And I will present to you the amendments to Monterey City Code chapters 33 and 38 to implement.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh. Um, my phone, my mic is on.
Yeah.
I can
Okay.
There you go.
All right, so I will be presenting to you the amendments to Monterey City Code chapters 33 and 38 to implement the provisions of Senate Bill 9 and one of our housing element programs. The presentation is two parts. One of them, I will explain how did we get here and what exactly is SB 9? And the second part is what should Monterey's SB 9 ordinance look like? So how did we get here? Since 2017, the California Legislature has passed more than 200 new housing laws to alleviate California's housing challenges. And some of them focus on permit streamlining, others focus on enforcement and government accountability, others do upzoning, et cetera. But just like ADU law, SB 9 aims to increase housing supply across the state. So what does SB 9 do? It requires ministerial approval of a two-unit housing development. So usually when you think of a single-family parcel, you think of one single-family home on it. But SB 9 requires that we now allow two units on that parcel. That means two homes plus ADUs and JADUs must be allowed up to a total of four units on one parcel. And you can see that here, these are examples of what that could look like. So the pink are the what you would think of as homes, typical single-family homes. And then you can add an ADU or a JADU combination to achieve up to four units on the lot. SB 9 also requires ministerial approval of an urban lot split. And this is a one-time subdivision of an existing single-family parcel into two parcels. And this would also allow up to four units on what we usually think of as a single-family parcel. This is an example of what that could look like. So in in general, you have a regular single-family lot, but then you can split it as SB 9 allows, and then build a total of four units on that what used to be one lot. So in all of these examples, except for the last one, you can have up to four units. You don't have to build four, but you can have up to four. So what does this look like on paper or on in reality? SB 9 allows ministerial review, meaning no discretionary subjective review or CEQA for two-unit developments and lot splits. This means that we we have to allow construction of two units up to 800 square feet each, even if the lot is already maxed out on floor area ratio and lot coverage. We have to allow adjacent or connected structures, meaning duplexes. We have to allow the units to be as close to the re as close to four feet to the rear and side property lines. We have to allow a minimum lot size of 1,200 square feet for lot splits. And a 60-40 split at most, meaning if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, you can split it. The difference can be no more than 60,000 to 4,000, 6,000 to 4,000. Uh, so you can't have a lot that is that ends up with 8,000, 2,000. So that's that's a 60-40 split at most. And we can only allow up to one And we can only allow up to one off-street parking space per unit. So these are the requirements under the state law. But there are also many restrictions. There are many requirements that need to be met in order to be eligible for SB nine streamlining. Uh, and these are some of the examples that we can, uh, we come across in Monterey. Monterey has wetlands, earthquake fault zones, flood zones, habitat for protected species, historic properties and districts. Um, you, you also are limited to, um, you can't use SB nine if you, you will be altering or demolishing affordable housing, rent-controlled housing, tenant-occupied housing in the last three years, or housing withdrawn from rent by the owner in the last fifteen years. So all of these things would prevent you from using SB nine. In addition, there is a requirement for lot splits that if you split a lot, the owner of that lot is required to live there for three years, or they have to provide an affidavit saying that they will live there for three years, for a minimum of three years. SB nine, so what, what has SB nine in Monterey done so far? As Monterey has only received five requests for SB nine approval since it became law in twenty twenty one. That's only five, and it's been more than four years that we've, that this law has been active. And zero of them have been constructed. And the biggest constraints are, and these are the reasons that we're not seeing the construction or the interest, is that no new water meters are requ, are allowed in Monterey. Um, most properties do not have enough water credits to build a second unit or more than that. Monterey, the typical lot sizes in Monterey is also small compared to other jurisdictions. Our typical lot size is fifty by a hundred, which is five thousand square feet. So most of our lots have limited buildable area. Construction costs are also too high. And again, you cannot demolish an existing structure if it's been, if it's tenant-occupied in the last three years. So a lot of, um, potential properties are already, um, screened out because of these things. Um, one thing, good thing to note is that property owners can only use SB nine to facilitate new housing units and urban lot splits. SB nine cannot be used to add a bedroom balcony, increase the size of a living room kitchen, increase the height of a roof, add a shed, create a rooftop deck, and others, because none of these things create a new unit. So you have to be creating a new unit to use SB nine. This gets to the second part of the presentation. What should our ordinance look like? So because we have a zoning ordinance, a current zoning ordinance, and a current subdivision ordinance, we are splitting the SB nine ordinance into each of these chapters. The two-unit development would live in the zoning ordinance chapter and urban lot splits would be in the subdivision chapter. The two ordinances follow state law closely, but with the following exceptions. Tree replacements, access easement requirements, and affordable unit incentives. The tree replacement objective standard that we have proposed is that trees that are impacted or that are within the proposed development shall be replaced at a two-to-one replacement ra, ratio. The other standard that we are proposing is that for lot splits where you end up with a lot in the back that is not immediately adjacent to a public right-of-way, we are requiring a pu, uh, access easement no less than twelve feet wide to provide access to that lot, um, eh, for access and, um, also to have assigned maintenance responsibility for shared easements, shared driveway, and shared landscaping. The third standard that we have proposed is that if one unit, one housing unit is made affordable to a very low-income household, then you can have up to six housing units on a single-family parcel as shown on this slide. So what used to be a single-family parcel, you could have up to six units now, only if one of them is made affordable to the very low-income household. And then the other incentive that we are proposing is that one unit may go up to one thousand square feet if the owner is providing two or more bedrooms. So instead of the required eight hundred square foot unit, we are allowing it to go up to a thousand square feet, again, if it provides very, um, the affordability. And now I will go through the consist, this, the ordinance's consistency with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and subdivision ordinance, and subdivision map act. Uh, that affordable unit incentive that I just mentioned would implement our Housing Action Plan Program One J, which provides housing opportunities for very low-income families. So again, um, by adopting this standard, um, allowing one unit to be made affordable to a very low-income household, then that allows the owner to provide up to six units and one unit can go up to a thousand square feet. And that is, so that is consistent with the general plan housing element. Um, the amendments would provide a precise guide for SB nine development in Monterey by enforcing the setbacks, lot area, unit size, and parking required by SB nine. And also by adopting that, uh, those additional provisions of, um, the access easement and the tree replacement requirements, we would be providing open space and require tree retention to the maximum extent feasible. And these are consistent with the zoning ordinance purposes and objectives. Um, these would also provide adequate open space for light, air, and fire safety, preservation of the character and quality of Monterey's residential neighborhoods, preservation of Monterey's forested nature to the maximum extent feasible. The amendments would be consistent with the subdivision ordinance and map act in that they would require that access be maintained for firefighting purposes, so that access easement, um, would protect public health, um, by allowing a fire truck to enter the property in the back. Also, by requiring that east, um, that this easement be recorded, it also aids in enforcing and assigning maintenance responsibility of that easement. Again, for firefighting purposes, access, utilities, uh, shared utilities and shared landscaping. Also, a covenant of easement as applicable would also be required. And this would all protect, uh, the public health, safety, and general welfare. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that the City Council amend these chapters to implement the provisions of Senate Bill Nine and the Housing Element, allowing ministerial approval of qualifying residential development and lot splits. I'm available for questions, and our planning staff is also here for, to aid in questions.
Thanks, Fernanda. Any questions for Fernanda? Peter?
Thank you, Fernanda. Could you please go back to the first slide that showed the different potential configurations?
Okay. For the two-unit development or the lots?
For the two-unit development.
Oh, this one?
That one. So, um, I, I'm looking at this and I'm, I'm wondering, eh, could, could there be a, another alternative where, uh, you have, for instance, on the second one, you've got the two units and you have two separate ADUs? Is that what I'm looking at?
The third one, yes, that's what it's, um.
Well, the, the second one where you have them separated, that the ADUs are separated.
Mm-hmm.
And, or even the third one, for that matter, um, the, what I'm getting at is, um, could the ADU also be attached to these units instead of being separated?
It could.
So I ran into this problem, not a problem, but an issue with a different jurisdiction a couple of years ago where I had an SB nine project, where we had, um, uh, two attached units and an attached ADU. And they, this other jurisdiction, the planning staff, blamed that this all of a sudden is multifamily and that we had to do the full accessibility and the California Building Code requirements and all of this. And I tried to argue that accessory dwelling units are not considered dwelling units for the purposes of defining multifamily. That it's, it's a different entity, it's a different animal altogether. And it was really frustrating trying to e, educate the planners about this in a way that, um, was consistent with what the laws allowed us to do. So, um, and then they then reached out to their building department and the building department, much to my surprise, agreed with the planning's interpretation. So it drew out this process to, um, uh, you know, a, a very frustrating ordeal for my app, for my client and myself. And so my concern here is that there could be a potential disconnect between what planning is doing here and what, how building will interpret this. Because unless there's training or something, the building department is going to look at this and say, you've got three or more units, and that's multifamily, when it's, when it's really not. And so I was wondering if there's going to be some training or education on the part of the building department to fully grasp what we're doing here.
Uh, definitely, um, you know, once we have an adopted SB nine ordinance, we will definitely train all the planners or, and building staff, um, to un, so ADUs and JADUs, uh, do not count toward density, so that's, that's the state law. It says you can't count them as, as increased density. And so that would solve, that is a learning opportunity for everyone.
Yeah, and this.
They don't already know.
It wasn't the density issue, and I, you're right. Um, it was simply a matter of three dwelling units being attached to each other. And once they saw that, they then said, this is multifamily. And, and when, when it's not, because the ADU is not considered a dwelling unit for the purposes of, of defining multifamily.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Yeah, and I'll just add, um, this is an excellent point, and, and that illustration is not meant to be, you know, completely inclusive of every possible scenario. Uh, to your point, um, there are, are other options for configuring how these units can, can be fitted in. Uh, as Fernanda mentioned, we, we certainly look to, uh, train our planning staff and our building staff. And our building staff's quite educated as, as it stands on ADUs, and they're, they permit a lot of ADUs. So they're very comfortable. I think as you know a lot of the nuances and how things are labeled on a plan, uh, what could be considered a multifamily, uh, unit can be considered an ADU by changing the label to ADU if it meets all the requirements. So, and that's typically how we operate, is we, we look to how the project's being proposed and what the units are being labeled from the applicant and, and how we make those decisions. And those, that evolves over the course of a project, too, how, how units are labeled.
Right.
Um, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eh, and that can be manipulated very easily, but, um, anyway, we won't, we won't go there. Fernanda, could you please then go to the slide that showed the affordable option with the six units?
This one?
I guess it was, um.
Yeah, that was the one.
There was, I, I believe those, there was, uh, another one where you said, where you claimed that you could do six, up to six units.
That's the one.
Oh, well, I mean, this is an illustration of, yes, that you could have up to six units.
Right, and so the same thing would have, here, we, we've got, let's say, two attached units, and they're not ADUs, they're just dwelling units. And if there's an incentive to include one or more because of the affordability incentive, that would make it multifamily.
It, it's possible if, if there, none of those units, if the additional unit would not meet the requirements or the, the criteria to be considered an ADU. Is that correct?
Yeah.
What, what does the building code say? Is it over three units?
Three or more.
Oh, three or more?
Yeah.
Over two?
Yeah, three or more is, is multifamily. And then the, the other consideration is, once it becomes three or more, um, you're required to use the California Building Code as the, instead of the California Residential Building Code. So the California Residential Building Code governs one and two family dwelling units. Once you go to three, you have to use the CBC, which then opens up the, the door for accessibility and everything that that entails.
Uh, yeah. I mean, I, I found our, uh, building official here pretty quick with all these sort of issues. So it would be, it's a good idea to check with her, uh, and she'll probably have a, um, an answer for you.
That's it. Terry, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Um, so I guess I, I did print out the, the two exhibits, A and B. So A is the, um, basically the, um, ministerial approval of two-unit housing units. And exhibit D is the, um, the, basically the lot split. So those are the two different ordinances. And I just have a smattering of questions. I'll start with exhibit A. Um, so the way you described it and the way I, I read it here is that the, um, a normal residential property could have a principal unit, an ADU, and a JADU. So you can have three units on one lot.
That's before SB nine.
Right, so SB nine, your interpretation of SB nine here in exhibit A, um, really limits it to, um, uh, you know, once you, once you actually, um, divide up a property into two properties, then you can only do two and two. You can't have those three units unless one of them is low in, very low income.
Right, so, yeah, current, I mean, before SB nine became law, you could have a primary unit, an ADU, and a JADU on a single-family parcel.
Right.
Now, after SB nine got passed, you can split the lot and you can add up to two on each, uh, so that means total of four.
Right.
But the City of Monterey has a housing element program that says we, we should allow up to six to meet our housing goals. So that's why we are, um, proposing adding two extra units to that total of four for a total of six to implement, um, if one of them is made affordable.
Right.
To implement our housing element program.
And that, there are, uh, there's a part here later on in the, in the draft ordinance where they talk about, um, the, um, that there are prohibitions against any future, um, units or lot splits. But that obviously is, that's all built in here, that, this exception for the very low-income situation.
Yes, so we just, we put that in there because we want to prevent people from further splitting the lot down to, so basically you're, you're going beyond what SB nine is allowing.
Right.
We don't want people to just keep splitting lots and to keep adding units. Um, that doesn't promote orderly, orderly development, so.
Right.
Um, we put that prohibition, that would be, uh, in the form of a, probably a deed restriction, um, to limit the, the number of units to what we approved under SB nine.
So I didn't see anything. I, i, is there actually a language in the draft ordinance for a deed restriction?
That would be, uh, on a city attorney template that would be worked out, um, between planning staff and city attorney's office.
Okay, so this, this is coming to us. Let's say we were to accept these two draft ordinances today. Then they go right to City Council, don't they?
Yes.
Between that time, the city attorney would do her magic and, and, uh, come up with these draft ordinances and a change to the, or, you know, uh, you see what I'm saying?
So the city attorney has already looked at these ordinances.
Uh-huh.
And they're, she said they're ready. And they're, she said they're ready to go to city council pending on planning commission's recommendation.
Okay.
And the the deed restrictions, the the access easement, the affidavits, those things um that are required in order to be eligible for SB nine. All those things would, can get worked out on the back end um and not have to go to approval to city council. Um, so the city manager could, this ordinance would allow the city manager to enter into agreements with property owners to to make sure they um enter into the, or they um record those deed restrictions.
Okay, so and this, when it goes to city councils, do they have two readings of a draft ordinance like this? So they they might fuss over whether or not that uh, you know, deed restriction is specifically requested in the draft ordinance.
The city council, um, it's very common for the city council to delegate authority to the city manager.
Okay.
To enter into those agreements or restrictions with the property owners and on behalf of the city.
So I was thinking about the uh the lot split issue, which I guess is is exhibit B. So the um, let's say you had a a big lot in the R one zone that was twenty thousand square feet. And they were taking advantage of this, then they'd end up with um, you know, two, if they had a twenty thousand square foot lot and they split it in half, they'd still have basically, you know, two ten thousand square foot lots, which would normally then be further subdilled by a dividable, but not according to this, unless you're doing an extra low-income unit, you're stuck in that, after that, once you divided it once, then that's it. You know, they're not going to let you do it again. It's going to be some kind of a deed restriction that'll enforce that.
Yes, so once you divide, you, so SB nine is a streamlining law, so it speeds up the process um if you meet certain criteria that I mentioned. So you can use SB nine to split the lot once. Um, but you could go through the regular minor subdivision process that requires a planning permit and it requires discretionary review and SEQA. You could do that, use that to further subdivide, but then we would be, you know, reviewing it and making sure it meets our minimum lot size requirement.
Right.
So you can't use SB nine twice to to split a lot, whether or not you provide a affordable unit or not.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I'll just, I'll just add to that, to to your point, in a scenario like that, um, what would make the most sense is to go through the standard subdivision process.
Before you went to SB nine?
Exactly. If you had the ability to meet all the minimum lot requirements and could through the lot area achieve more lots than two, it would be more advantageous for developers to go through the standard subdivision process and meet those requirements.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Thanks.
Alternatively, would would um an applicant choose to do a plan development and bypass the subdivision altogether?
Possibly, but that's a different process in and of itself that would require zoning, zone changes and the creation of that plan development. But yes, that's another possibility also would be subject to SEQA. So as Fernanda mentioned, I think the primary uh benefits to an SB nine application would be the reduction in development standards, things like the lot size setbacks and 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 lot coverage and floor area that kind of, you don't have to know any abide by any longer. And then the streamlined review process, those are really the benefits. If you're not seeking a reduction in development standards and you're not trying to bypass the public hearing process or SEQA and a standard subdivision uh route is probably more suitable. Which I think is, as Fernanda pointed out, while we we don't see a lot of these, I think statewide, they haven't seen as many SB nine applications as anticipated because they really do fit a uh a very um small select group of properties that makes sense for.
So then uh keeping on exhibit A, uh, page four talks about the um, you know, that separate uh water meters are, will be required in the future. But it looks like for now, because CalAmp doesn't really allow them, an applicant would be allowed to do uh one meter to pull off this uh two-unit situation.
Yes.
But but then there's no, nothing in the, in there, maybe that's probably too fussy where in the future they'd have to come back and get that approved. You know, they have to add another meter later, once CalAmp allows uh more water meters.
So currently, the building division um allows the submetering where where app, or um where there's enough water credits on site, they allow the submetering. And when new water meters are allowed in the city, we we would probably do a sweep of all construction in Monterey that has submeters and require that they all get new water meters.
Really? Wouldn't it need to say that here, though?
It says uh that when the city's water purveyor is allowed to establish new water meters, separate water meters shall be required.
Oh, shall, you're right, okay. Shall be, okay. Oh, that's that. Um, let's see, so then page, um, it doesn't have a page number, but it's the next page after that one that's talking about parking. Um, so when you're looking at this, uh, you know, the uh parcel has to be within one and a half mile uh walking distance of either a stop located in a high-quality transit corridor as decided defined in the Public Resources Code or a major transit stop. So when you say half-mile walking distance, does that mean somebody is getting a, you know, pedometer and and seeing how many steps it's taking to get, because by the crow flies, it's it's different than walking distance. So that's, that assumes somebody's actually checking that distance.
Yes, uh, that that's correct. It needs to be a walking route or a wheelchair route.
Okay, so like, I'm just curious, for instance, is Pacific Avenue or Franklin considered? Uh, I mean, maybe you don't know this off the top of your head, but I guess there's a map of of the high-quality transit corridors?
So we do not have a map. Um, we've looked into this and we don't see any, that any of our bus stops are major transit stops or um our high-quality transit corridors.
Oh, so we don't have one in the city?
That's uh, our attorney has looked into this and we are not finding any.
Even the transit center near Trader Joe's?
Yes.
Oh, that's interesting.
So the, as the section of code here cited, the Public Resources Code section that's included in the ordinance amendment um that references the high-quality transit corridor, major transit stop has pretty specific criteria in that section of code in it. And it uh requires a certain level of frequency and an intersection of of lines that our transit plaza does not currently meet. So uh, that's kind of, it could potentially one day qualify, but as the, under the current service from MST, it does not right now.
Oh, okay, so I mean, MST has always talked about changing the transit center, maybe that'll qualify sometime in the future.
Potentially, or an increase of service could also potentially qualify the stop.
Okay, well, the other thing I had, I, you know, I'm always struggling with this as an applicant is the um, like the half-mile, I assume it would go from the edge of property to edge of property? Like the edge of the applicant's property to the edge of the transit center property?
Yes, the edge, the closest distance from the edge of property to the bus stop.
Okay.
Could could the city um go above and beyond SB nine with the parking reduction? And even though it's been stated that we don't have a major transit stop or high-quality corridor, nonetheless, the city could always decide to incentivize these projects by reducing parking just independently of the SB nine.
If the city chose to do that, they could.
But that, that, it seems like that one thing is a bit self-cancelling. If we don't have any of these uh corridors or transit centers in the city, then that law is just waiting for changes to become applicable. Um, see, the next one is on page six of exhibit A. So there's towards the top of the page, section B, so you talk about the um, you know, there's a sort of incentive uh where um you can go up to a thousand square feet if two or more bedrooms are provided.
Hmm.
Where did that come from? Was that just sort of a staff uh intuitive kind of a thing?
Yes, the uh, the Housing Element Program one J, it, the goal of it is to promote housing for very low-income families with children. And staff found that to allow the unit to go up to a thousand square feet if two or more bedrooms are provided, that would provide more bedrooms for families with children.
Okay. Uh, thanks. And then um, so exhibit B on page three. Um, there's a whole thing about adjacent parcels. And so applicants, so I'm just thinking of, because you have this very specific definition of adjacent parcels here. Um, and it looks to me like this uh, the, under the definition on page three, adjacent parcels are, can be across the street from each other.
Yes.
So is there, like, is there a, I mean, I'm thinking lawyerly here, like, how, let's say they're across the street from each other. How far across the street from each other can they be to qualify here? Is this tight enough of a definition?
It doesn't matter how big the public right-of-way is. Um.
Well, what I mean is, obviously, if two parcels are directly across the street from each other, this adjacent thing would, they would qualify as being adjacent. But if they're a hundred feet, you know, the edges are not actually, they aren't across from each other, but they're sort of, you know, down the street. Um, is, I'm just wondering if this definition has been thought through enough to to uh encounter that kind of a situation.
Um, I mean, the way that, so our zoning ordinance, um, the the zoning district goes to the middle of the street, even though it's not mapped, but so we have to um apply this uh adjacent parcels, we would um basically draw a center line on the street on the right-of-way. And then that's how we would know if they would touch or not.
Right.
And I think I'll add the um, I think to to your point, Commissioner Lutassa, I think it would depend on if there was a property in between the two that has different ownership.
Okay.
Because that uh, that third section of that definition um of quote here is separated only by other real property, which is in common ownership or control of the applicant. So in the scenario that you're describing, I think it would depend if there was a a property in the, across the street and in between that property owned by somebody else.
I I guess my point here is that the um the adding uh uh properties across the street from each other as being defined as adjacent seems a little funny to me. Why, where did that come from? Why? I mean, is there some reason why you're using that uh kind of uh questionable definition?
This is the set of definitions that was proposed by the city attorney's office. Um, and I think it really kind of directly relates to the definition immediately above it in the, in exhibit B, which is acting in concert. And really, the intent of thoroughly describing this is to uh, is to further enforce the prohibition of of applicant's ability to uh utilize SB nine um uh more than once with properties adjacent to one another.
Right.
So so really, I think that's why you're you're looking at a definition for adjacent parcels that probably, to your point, goes a little bit above and beyond what you're typically seeing.
Okay, but it seems like if if two uh properties are across the street from each other and there's, let's say they're sort of, you know, their property lines that are closest are, you know, there's space in between them. Obviously, if they're right across from each other, then they're, they would be adjacent. You see what I'm after here. At some point, they aren't adjacent anymore, but it doesn't say that here. It's, you might, I I'm just suggesting you might want to tighten up this thing a little bit for those kind of weird situations. Uh, because then later on, there's a um, on the next page, um then it has a whole thing that, it's sort of a first-come, first-serv kind of a thing about um uh on the next, it doesn't have a, well, it's page four of exhibit B. Um, so if two adjacent property owners are going for a lot split at the same time, one of them has to get there first and then the other person doesn't get it. That's basically what this says.
If if they're in common ownership.
Oh, I see, if they're common ownership.
Yeah.
Okay, so if they are not in common ownership, they could both pursue uh independent applications.
Yes.
Correct, it's common ownership or if they're acting in concert, which is the, they're um defined in the, in the amendment um, which would be pursuing a shared goal to split adjacent lots pursuant to an agreement, so.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, I'm almost done here, sorry. Um, so the um, going on to page six of exhibit B, so the twelve-foot-wide easement, um, that's requirement, i- if, you know, if you're creating one stranded parcel on a, on a, you know, on a lot split, the um, where did that twelve feet come from?
We um looked for feedback from our fire department and our public works department. And the fire department said that twelve feet would allow a fire truck to go through.
Oh.
And also, our public works department said that a twelve-foot-wide driveway is the minimum required for multifamily development.
There's that word again.
Yeah, there it is. Um, twelve, it's a little bit big for, you know, I, now I understand that twelve feet is a fire department thing, so that at least makes sense. It's a little bit, it's good, that's going to be tough for people to take advantage of in the future, I think.
It's not big enough for two fire trucks.
That's true, twenty-four feet. Um, okay, that's all I have.
Great, well, thanks, Terry. Mike, do you have any questions? I have a comment. Okay. Go.
Um, actually, I'm sorry, we're, we're in the portion, so if this turn into deliberation, we're just in questions.
Um, so no question right now. I have a comment. Right, all right, we'll do that when we bring it back. Um, Fernanda, just curious, um, given everything you had listed in that one graphic showing the limitations, we're not going to see many changes in terms of SB nine developments in the city until the water is definitely resolved, right?
So. Yes, that's correct. Um, we've only seen, like I mentioned, five applications and none of them have been constructed. It's just um housing co, uh, construction costs are really high and maybe it doesn't make sense for the developers to to construct and maybe it doesn't pencil out. Um, but also, yes, water availability is the number one restricting factor. But even in jurisdictions that do have enough water available for this type of development, it's not, it hasn't been a popular thing, SB nine. They just haven't, we, there's a study by the Turner Center out of San Francisco and and I think they partner with Berkeley. Um, and they did a survey of, I think, thirteen jurisdictions and a lot of them don't see more than some of them are in the single digits as well.
Hmm.
Even though they have a better water situation than we do.
Hmm, hmm. Yeah, I was trying to think of lots that might fit some of the um situations that we discussed. Um, the only one that comes to mind is the Halem lot, which is really large. Um, given that lot, I mean, I guess historic status may affect it, water would affect it. Um, but just trying to keep that lot in mind, what could be done with that lot? The Halem lot? Yeah, the Halem. Achiwawa. I mean, it's a large, you know, but there's not that many lots in Monterey that have any real large sizes. I mean, it's mostly been divided up already.
The ones that, the applications that we received that are the biggest lot sizes are along Awa Hito Road and Jocelyn Canyon Road.
Hmm.
And those lot sizes range between half an acre to an acre.
Hmm.
So those, we we're only seeing, I mean, mostly seeing large lots, um l- large lot owners to submit applications.
Hmm.
But there's a um, isn't there supposed to be some water coming this year from uh the water district?
Um, that's what we've heard, but the city council would need to make. That's what we've heard, but the city council would need to make a priority list of who would get that water first. And that, that hasn't been discussed. So.
Yes, we're, um, intending to receive, I believe, 141 acre feet of water. We're getting monthly allocations, but there's no, uh, water policy that's been, uh, adopted at this point in time. So that water is actually not able to be utilized until January 2025. So hopefully we'll have a water policy between now and then.
You mean January 26?
I'm sorry, you're correct. Yes.
So, uh, is, and that'll be coming from the, uh, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. So they're bored.
The allocation.
Do this.
Well, they've already adopted a resolution to allocate that water to the various jurisdictions. Um, and we're, we're receiving monthly allocation on paper, but the actual water is not to be, uh, it can't be accessed until January of the next year. Uh, but as Fernanda mentioned, we are, we're hoping to have a, uh, some direction from our city council as to how that water is going to be allocated locally.
Right. So I imagine a, a good amount of it will be for residential, you know, use, given all the, uh, you know, the.
Given arena numbers, I would, I would expect so.
Yeah.
I have another.
Sure.
I'm just thinking hypothetically for maybe Levi and Fernanda. Um, if there is a existing commercial property, and I'm thinking like along CAS, where you have all the medical or dental. And if somebody had a commercial property there and wanted to take advantage of SB nine, but first they had to rezone to resi, or potentially rezone, is it already, it's already mixed, isn't it?
Yes. So we, we applied the multifamily residential overlay over that entire area. So a lot of, in that, in that circumstance, it would make the most sense to probably develop under the existing zoning, utilizing the overlay. Uh, again, that's a multifamily overlay, so it doesn't require subdivision to create additional units. Um, so.
So if, if they were to develop using the multifamily overlay, they could still do SB nine.
So not under the current zoning. So SB nine is limited to zoning districts that are zoned for single family residential. So again, this was, uh, the state's intense intentions with this bill was to allow for the single family property owners to further develop additional units. Uh, I think the state recognizes in other zoning districts, whether it be multifamily or commercial, there is more effective ways to, to increase density.
Any comments, um, in chambers on this issue? Maybe online, Fernanda?
There are three attendees online. I see one hand raised. I can go ahead and allow telephone caller ending in nine zero two to speak.
Please.
Can you hear me now?
Looks like.
This is Nina Beatty. Um, this is, where is your red line? Scott Weiner and his friends, um, acting like oligarchs are stripping local governments in this city of their historic jurisdiction. They're orderly planning processes and freedoms and eliminating nature and open space. They're stealing Monterey. This is David Jacks 2.0. What is your red line? Please say no. Do not recommend amending chapter 33 or 38 or ministerial approvals. They're unacceptable. That's not proper planning. Neither is the Housing Element Program. My father, who was on the Planning Commission and ARC, would be horrified. Please fight this. Instead of advising the city to fight SB nine, our city staff has worsened it, pushing through program I through J. To, in their own words, promote and facilitate it. Why? Six lots per u, per, three units per lot? Four units was huge. Investors must be drooling. The affordability agreement is long term? What term? Two years, five years, 10 years? Then it becomes market rate? Like Maro Coho's, no longer affordable housing? You need permanent restrictions. And this isn't homeownership. It's just more rentals. Three years of owner on site, then rental units that get swept into one of the big property management firms. They don't care about tenants or Monterey. The public cannot trust what's being promised by the city. One time lot split now, another lot split later. No vacation rentals today, open door to vacation rentals tomorrow. Tourism brings in the revenue, and with all these little ADUs, that's a lot of TOT revenue. Tourism is the city's priority. And can you imagine the Airbnb income for investors? No more single family neighborhoods. The only housing guarantee for low and very low income families is ownership. No more slave rentals. People will be trapped and die if there's an emergency. Forget fire and disaster planning and evacuations. Crowded streets, parking nightmares, worse than San Francisco. This destroys nature, trees and vegetation. Where are you going to allow them with the packed housing and the 12-foot easements everywhere? The city says replace every tree with two trees. Where? Are these miniature trees? This dramatically changes Monterey. The amendment attempts to require open space and encourage tree retention, et cetera, et cetera, attempts. This means that not only is this complete BS, but the city knows it. There is no open space or tree retention. Say no. This is a coup tearing down the city for someone's scheme to make special interest lots of money. A Puerto Vallarta, but carcinogenic, with toxic water from the Superfund site, stridium contaminated from the future desal water, and without the good weather. Don't turn us into San Francisco, please. Crammed in housing, no parking, no trees or nature like Scott Weiner's home turf. Please say no.
Thanks for your comment. Any further hands raised, Erica?
There are no other hands raised.
Great. Mike, we'd like to make your comment now.
Yeah. I thought that, uh, that, uh, this is, this is the Planning Commission. And, and what we, what we're supposed to do is, is make Monterey a better place through, through our planning. And I don't think that this is going to make Monterey a better place. It's going to make it worse. And so I, I really, I just can't, I can't vote for this.
Any other comments?
Sure. Um, first, I wanted to compliment, um, Fernanda on the, on the job you did of this. I, I thought it was a really complicated task to put this into ordinance. And just to remind everybody, this, um, Senate Bill nine requires that we kind of do this. You know, we have to have the state, you know, if an applicant has a lawyer, they'll go and say, oh, we have ministerial approval here for, for this project. And so this basically lays out all the rules for what is ministerial and what has to go through, you know, the regular process. So I don't know how we can get away from not doing this kind of a, um, the, these ordinances. I, I, I see what you're saying, but I, I think, uh, the staff has done a really good job of putting these two draft ordinances together. And I don't know what else can we do. It's very similar to the ADU ordinances. We, we are, we have a state law that, that is, uh, supersedes our own laws in these cases. And we kind of got to follow them.
Well, Terry, you're absolutely right. I mean, this is something that is being forced upon every local jurisdiction in the state, whether we like it or not. And certainly there's vocal opposition, as we just heard, but our hands are tied. I personally think it's, um, it's in the right direction. The only issue I have really is that the state mandates are never really tailored to a particular jurisdiction. Like, for instance, Monterey, we've got water issues that this doesn't even address, but it still says you, you can do this if you need to. I'm in favor of it overall. I, I don't believe that the fear mongering is, is going to ever, um, result in, um, a, a city that's going to have a reduced, um, uh, lifestyle as a result of the density that's being created. We certainly have arena allocation that we have to meet. That's where the real density is going to happen if, you know, if that ever gets built out. And this is really just a drop in the bucket for trying to implement a portion of that. So I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Yeah. And on top of that, I think from what Fernanda said in her presentation, we're not going to see a lot coming out of this. I think the way our city is set up, there's very few locations that are really going to have a impact on SB nine and, and the ordinance that we're passing. But having the mechanism in place within the city code to, to work with it is essential. So. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city council to amend chapters 33 and chapter 38 with Monterey City Code to implement the provisions of SB nine and the Housing Element Program IJ, uh, allowing for ministerial approval of qualifying residence, residential developments and lot splits.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Erica, we have a motion in a second. Could you please do a roll call for us?
Sure. Chair Blut.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
No.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Aye.
Right. That motion carries with a vote of three.
Okay. Next item on the public hearing is a familiar one. Um, consider 456 Lighthouse Avenue Use Permit Application UP 230072 to allow assembly major use and amplified music at, um, 456 Lighthouse Avenue. Um, Kristy, you're going to do the presentation?
Thank you. Kristy Tabdo, Principal Planner with the City of Monterey. Pulling up my presentation. I feel like there are a couple of versions on here. Sorry about that. Try the other version. I think this is the one. Sorry about that. Okay. Um, this is for 456 Lighthouse, uh, Use Permit Application to Allow an Assembly Major Use and Amplified Music. Uh, I'm going to go through the presentation I have. Um, I know this is the third time, but for those who haven't heard it, I'll try to go through it a little quicker than, um, previous presentations. Uh, the site includes, um, an existing 8,000, um, 57 square foot building with an existing parking lot. The building was remodeled in 2020 for use as a private office building and warehouse storage facility. Um, the existing building carries a, um, building occupancy group of B, which is limited to 30 occupants. Uh, we did visit the site, um, prior to our last Planning Commission meeting and just sharing some photos of the property. The zoning of the site is, um, PC, uh, Lighthouse Specific Plan. The general plan designation is mixed use neighborhood. Applicant Sam Pitnick applied for a use permit to allow for an assembly major use, uh, large group occupancy, or large group assembly and amplified music for, uh, to host private car related events. So this is just comparing the existing uses, um, versus the proposed uses. Professional offices would remain the same. Um, there would be a reduction in the warehouse storage use. Uh, they're proposing the assembly major use, large group assembly for private events. And, um, this would allow the, uh, occupancy group, Assembly A, that would allow for up to approximately 314 people, people, although the use permit would limit the amount of people, um, less than that. And they are proposing amplified music. And, um, the ABC license would be through private vendors, which I'll explain in a minute. So the original, um, proposal, um, was for 12 events per year, three to five events with 314 people maximum. And all of the other events would be 175 people maximum. Um, however, at our last Planning Commission meeting, May 27th, 2025 meeting, and this is the same as a proposal as it is today, the applicant, um, proposed a reduction in, in events. Uh, so it would be six events per year, three events with 250 people maximum. And all other events, uh, would be 175 people maximum. This would be a total annual reduction in, um, 1,520 people versus the originally proposed number of events. So, um, let's see, the onsite, um, daily use would be primarily professional office. Uh, the proposed private car related events would be by invitation only. Again, six events per year, uh, three events per year would reach full capacity of 250 people potentially. And then the other events would be limited to 175 people. Um, the events would include product demonstrations, viewings, educational classes and lectures. The events would be held indoors. However, on occasion, certain aspects of the event would be held outdoors in the existing parking lot. Event hours would be between, um, eight and six PM and five, uh, five PM and 10 PM, typically three or four hours in length. Private event staff would be between five and 20 people, would include support staff consisting of vendors, caters and security. Outside vendors would provide all staff for events. Um, again, the events may include live entertainment, amplified music, such as an MC lectures, musicians or live DJ performances. Any of the, uh, food and beverages would be provided by vendors, and they would be required to carry the vendor, um, ABC permit, which would be the type 58. And the parking lot would be restripped to accommodate 20 vehicles. Onsite parking will be reserved for guests, especially requiring accessible parking. Vendor, staff and security can use the onsite parking lot during event setup and breakdown, but will need to park offsite during the event. There's going to be a new trash enclosure installed, uh, 15 by 18 foot trash enclosure would contain four 96 gallon recycling bins and two dumpsters. Uh, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, um, has indicated that they would issue a waiver as long as the primary use, um, of the building remains group, a group one use, which is office. So, um, any of the events would need to be considered subordinate. And we did add a condition of approval stating that, um, we'll go over the conditions of approval in a minute. Here is the proposed site plan, existing seconds, uh, two-story commercial building and parking lot. This is the proposed floor plan for the office and for the proposed events. On May 27th, the Planning Commission adopted a negative declaration for the assembly major use and amplified music. And there were no significant, um, impacts found. Um, therefore, no mitigation measures were required. Uh, the notice of determination was filed at Monterey County. Uh, I will go through the findings. Uh, the only finding that has changed is finding two, but I'll still repeat these. Uh, so finding one is that the proposed use is in accord with the objectives of this chapter and the purposes of this zone. So the project is located in the Plant Community Lighthouse Specific Plan area, which requires a use permit for both assembly major uses and the amplified music. Uh, the proposed assembly major use would allow a max, maximum of six auto oriented events per year, of which only three events would reach full capacity of 250 people. Uh, this includes any support staff such as vendors, caters and security. The number of staff and vendor employees for private events would vary from five to 20, depending on event need and guest count. The vision of the Lighthouse Specific Plan is to create a livable community and a revitalized destination point on Lighthouse Avenue and Foam Street for residents and visitors. The project is consistent with the land use and development objectives. Oh, 1.1 of the Lighthouse Specific Plan, which states the plan will allow projects that include neighborhood serving and or visitor serving commercial uses or buildings. Uh, visitor serving uses are not defined in the specific plan. However, the proposed project would be considered a visitor serving commercial use, inviting visitors on an invitation only basis to attend a car related event. Um, events may also include the live entertainment and amplified music, offer food and beverages, including alcohol. Um, the Monterey City Code includes performance standards to address noise associated public nuisances. And, um, here are the standards. There was a noise assessment that was prepared in August of 2024 that included the following threshold. Uh, the non-transportation noise levels associated with proposed project would be considered non-compliant with the standards if the daytime noise levels would exceed 60 decibels, um, at residential land uses or 65 decibels at nearby commercial land uses. And the assessment concluded that the noise level range, um, identified in, um, this table, which I'll show you in a second, is below the daytime noise standards for each land use adjacent to the project site. So this shows all the, uh, modeled receivers, the land use type, um, the daytime noise standard, and all of, um, the noise levels were below, uh, the standard. The Lighthouse Specific Plan does not require additional parking when the use of an existing building changes or intensifies. Regardless, the applicant has provided a parking plan for up to six private, um, events to be held on the property annually. The onsite parking lot would accommodate up to 20 vehicles and would. The onsite parking lot would accommodate up to 20 vehicles and would be accessible during events. On-site parking would be reserved for guests, especially those requiring accessible parking. Vendors and staff and security can use the onsite parking lot, sorry, I know I've just said this, during the event setup and breakdown, but will need to park at the offsite lot during the event. Private event guests would have multiple options available for event parking, including the onsite parking lot, 20 spaces. Parking at a private parking lot at 600 Hawthorne Street, 50 spaces. And at the multiple parking garages in the area. Finding two is that the proposed use and proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained would be consistent with the general plan, will not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood, and will, will not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the city. So the general, this finding is met. The general plan designation is mixed-use neighborhood. The mixed-use neighborhood use allows for multiple functions within the same building or adjacent to one another in the same general vicinity to foster a mix of uses that encourages people to live, work, play and shop in close proximity. A full range of uses are permitted. Residential, retail, employment, entertainment, cultural, public and personal service use. The project meets the intent of the mixed-use neighborhood land use designation and would bring people to the Lighthouse District to work, play and shop. While parking isn't required for the proposed assembly major use in the Lighthouse Specific Plan, the applicant has provided a parking plan for the private events that would alleviate disruption to the neighborhood and businesses on Lighthouse Avenue. And so kind of in summary, the private events are proposed to have 250 people in attendance with only 20 parking spaces available onsite. Comparable uses located elsewhere in the city would typically require an onsite parking ratio of one space per 50 square feet of space. If that ratio were applied to the proposed project, a total of 88 parking spaces would be required. So a parking plan for the six private events provided by the applicant would avoid any disruption to the neighborhood or businesses along Lighthouse Avenue. Of the 88 spaces assumed for the proposed use, 20 spaces would be available in the proposed parking lot on 456 Lighthouse Avenue, 50 spaces would be available at an offsite parking lot at 600 Hawthorne. A private parking agreement between First Baptist, First Baptist Church and the property owner would be required under the conditions of approval, and they've already been in discussions with the owner. And the remaining 18 spaces would be accommodated by the multiple city parking garages in the area. Therefore, the proposed use and proposed conditions, which it would be operated or maintained would be consistent with the general plan, would not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood, and would not be detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the city. Finding three, the proposed use will comply with any specific conditions required for that use. The applicant would be required to maintain compliance with any associated conditions of approval. Staff has drafted conditions of approval. Staff recommends that the planning commission receive the additional information provided by the applicant in response to the planning commission's direction provided at the May 27 meeting and determine if the required findings for approval are met in accordance with Monterey City Code for use permit application at Lighthouse Avenue. And I can go through each of the conditions. It is in your packet, but maybe let me know if you have any questions about the conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions about them, and the applicant is also in attendance.
Thanks, Christie. Any questions for Christie? Yes.
Christie, what is the current use at 600 Hawthorne?
Professional office and warehouse facility.
And
I'm sorry, were you asking about the property at 600 Hawthorne or?
Sorry, it's a First Baptist Church.
I'm sorry?
First Baptist Church.
That's 600 Hawthorne?
It's a church.
And could you go back to the slide at finding two? Maybe I didn't understand, but it seemed like there were two. It said 600 Hawthorne. Oh, I see, 600 Hawthorne, private parking agreement between the church. Okay. I thought that there were, those were separate. Okay, I'm sorry.
Terry, oh, you.
No, that's.
Terry, you have any?
Sure. So I, I would like to just go through the finding, or the conditions, rather. So they're the first three. Okay, hours of capacity. Amplified music. Notify adjoining properties. And then keep on going. After aligning. Okay. So I, I just have a couple of questions here.
Sure.
So the 20 spaces on the site, that's, that, that takes into account this parking or the, rather, the trash enclosure? Okay, seems like a lot of cars to fit on there, but the staff has verified that number of, okay. So just one little thing, at the bottom of finding one, there's a misspelling Hawthorne Street?
Oh, sure.
Very minor. So did, I never saw anything from the New Monterey Homers Association. Were they aware, are they still a going thing?
Yes, they, let's see.
They used to be so sort of active on the.
Yeah, they were listed on the agenda report, so they did receive notification of this item.
Okay, but they never commented?
No.
Okay. And so the, I guess the biggest question is, now they have come up with a parking plan, how would staff monitor the sort of event-by-event thing with the, maybe the applicant can answer this, but is, I guess my main concern is, is staff gonna be having to run out there and look at cars on, you know, and, and would it, as it says in Mr. Outson's letter, the, what about Sundays? Would they be precluded then from having events on Sundays during, you know, is it? How would staff monitor these things?
Sure. Well, condition three says 30 days prior to a special event, the applicant shall provide notification to the planning division of the date of the event to be held, expected attendance and parking plan for this event, so. I mean, that's a good question about if an event is held on a Sunday.
Yeah, and I'll just add, so as Christie mentioned, there's a condition requires them to tell the planning division what type of event. They have various levels of attendance based on the events they plan to hold. So that's kind of, this condition allows us to not only track the number of events, because they are limited to how many events they can do throughout the year, but it allows us to also track the attendance of the, of the events to see if they're hitting that 250 attendee threshold that qualifies as large events, and then it also would let us know which of the parking configurations or parking options that they have based on the attendant size that they're going to be utilizing for that event. So staff will be aware ahead of time of the event, the attendance size and the parking option that they're going to be utilizing. If you're asking if we're going to be out there onsite counting, counting cars, no, that's not typically how.
I imagine there would be some sort of agreement between these two property owners.
Yeah, there's a condition that requires them to get, provide the city with a copy of the executed parking agreement between. Not for each event, so it'll, it'll stipulate that they have the ability to, that they are in agreement, that they can utilize that offsite parking lot for events. As far as whether or not there will be events on Sundays, I think that's a little bit more in the weeds than what staff is looking to get into, how the operations of both the church and this, then you would function.
Okay, so one last question. So the Mr. Outson's letter has three items, and I just want to make sure that, you know, you've, you know, no floodlights in the parking lot, parking only. There is one condition there about lighting. And I guess that is sort of covered in that condition. Fire department approval for occupancy. That's more later when they get their building permit for this.
Right.
And Mr. Silva has discussed some of the other building issues they might run into, but that's not really our concern.
Yeah, and we have an attachment about that as well, about the question that Commissioner Silva had.
And then no auction or cars for sale as the applicant is not proposing such activity. So I, you know, I guess we don't, you know, we could think of everything in the world that could happen and have conditions about it, but that's never come up, so there's no condition about that.
Correct, they have not mentioned that would occur or opposed any such. Yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I have a follow-up. Sure. What would happen in the event where even though we've kind of asked the applicant to come back and do a parking program for 88 vehicles, and he's apparently done this, but what if we're wrong? And there's terrible impacts to the neighborhood with excessive parking? What happens at that point? And, and the city gets a lot of complaints.
There's excessive parking now.
Right, already, but to make it worse. So what, what, what happens?
We have condition number 12, which is a trial period condition. So the use permit is granted for, would be granted for a 12-month period. After the 12 months, a public hearing will be conducted, and the use permit shall be reviewed by the planning commission to address any of these issues. And any changes can be made at that time.
Okay, I'll save my last question as a comment then.
And I'll add also, if condition 13 is a revocation condition, so that's in the event that they're, for any reason, they're in violation of the conditions of this permit, and they're found to be in violation, and that's aiding to the impacts that you're describing, we would be able to, through code enforcement, be able to go through the proper procedure to revoke the use permit if they're in violation of conditions.
But I'm not talking about being in violation. I'm, I'm suggesting that even if they're complying with, you know, the, the parking program that's been described here, and there's still impacts, that's kind of where I'm going with it.
Yes, as Christie mentioned, there'd be a trial period associated with the use permit.
Right.
It's, it's, it's complaint-oriented.
Right.
Yeah.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sam Pitnick, applicant for 456 Lighthouse. It's good to see everybody again. Steve Kettrell will be joining us via Zoom tonight. I want to start by thanking you all for letting, letting us continue the project last month and allowing us a chance to work with staff to develop the parking plan. It's definitely been a bit of a process getting to this point, as Christie outlined, and then our proposal has evolved as we've received feedback from you, from staff and the community. But excited to be back tonight, and I think we've finally gone to a solution that will work. Since our first hearing, we've dramatically scaled back the number of events and the size of events, as you know. And since our second hearing, we worked with staff to develop this permanent parking plan. So yeah, Christie did highlight the, the parking lot at 600 Hawthorne Street, how we kind of came to that. First, we did explore the idea of reserving spaces at the public lots and garages, but it turns out that we were not, I guess, eligible to do so. So then we kind of took a look at the private lots in the area, and thanks to Steve's diligence, we were able to secure the lot over there at First Baptist Church. That lot can accommodate 50 cars without the use of a valet, and it's no more than a five-minute walk to our property, which is fantastic. I believe there was in your packet included email correspondence with the church agreeing to terms, and they understand the events, the duration of events. And so as soon as we have that contract, we'll circulate a copy for everybody to see. Mr. Silva, I don't know if you had a chance to see the email from Monterey Energy Group addressing the mechanical equipment question from last time. So hopefully that resolves that, but please let me know if, if you have any follow-ups. Yeah, so now we have the opportunity to park 50 cars privately, to bring them away from city lots, the garages, surrounding neighborhoods and streets. And if we are able to use our own lot during events, we can go up to 70 cars and even 80 cars with a valet, so really we're only asking for a very small amount of cars to potentially be absorbed by the city's public lots and garages. And then that's again, kind of a worst-case scenario, based on that 88 parking that we came up with last time. And, and the city again, does have thousands of off-street and on-street parking available to help absorb those few cars that we'd be potentially asking for. So in addition to that part of the parking plan, again, we are going to continue to emphasize, encourage taxis, ride-share, carpooling and walking to all events when kind of staying in the local hotels and motels. This language will be provided in all event invites and event websites. We will also be providing maps to our private parking lot, so tenants know where to go over on Hawthorne. And then in events where we can necessarily handle 100% of the cars, we will also provide maps to the nearest public parking garages. We did create, and I don't know if you saw, sort of a online event example page through Eventbrite. I don't know if it's possible to pull it up, but it basically showed you an example event, what it might look like to register the language about encouraging ride-share, carpooling, indicating that, you know, we have the onsite lot and then the offsite lot on Hawthorne. And then, so that's kind of how we would, you know, use that information to help guide attendees to these events. Yeah, so we're thrilled that the city is now able to make that second finding, and we take no exception to the proposed conditions of approval. So again, I want to thank you for your time and patience with us as we, you know, draft this plan for six events throughout the year. These events, we think are going to be great for the community, generate revenue for surrounding businesses and hotels, and we're confident we'll have no negative impacts on noise or parking. Again, we get to hopefully come back before you in a year and report on how we've done, and expect that there won't be any complaints a year from now, so thank you.
I'm happy to pull up the Eventbrite that Sam was referring to. If you'd like me to do that.
And then, yeah, while you're doing that, I know there's a comment about Sundays, so yeah, obviously we have to clear every event with the church, so chances are we probably won't be hosting events on Sunday mornings when the church is operational. But again, it'll be a kind of a event-by-event basis, and all this will have to be submitted to the city for their review.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Mike? About, about the valet parking?
Yeah.
I've been, I've been to parties where the, the valets would, would pick up the cars and park them in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And then, and then, and then so make a note so that you could, that they could go find it later. I hope that's not the way that this is gonna be.
No, it's not. I, I think it was at the second hearing or last hearing, we submitted a parking lot plan that shows that the valet said it would be entirely onsite. So people could pull their car just into the parking lot, drop off their keys, the valets will, you know, tandem park, and at the end of the night, yeah, they'll come pick them up.
Okay, thank you.
Nope. Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody in chambers have a comment?
Yeah, good afternoon, but not in my piece. Good evening, but anyway. My name is Carl Outson, and you got a, a letter from me today. The reason you didn't get it before was that I had no idea what was proposed for today's meeting. I didn't see it before Saturday night on the city website. So the applicant came up with new solutions. And so we wouldn't know that if they come in at 5 o'clock in the afternoon with the solutions. It'll be in packets, but we wouldn't know about those who oppose it. So I, I do have a few questions, and that's about the use permit. The use permit is, I still believe that it is not a use for Lighthouse Avenue. Lighthouse Avenue is one of the few, if not the only one, which is neighborhood servicing from Kennyville to Forest Hill. Like I said before, you have doctors, you have dentists, you have, you have doctors, I am all kind of, and so even have urgent care, so the impact of parking right now, the, the city call is this sparse parking down there, it's, it's, it's it's workable, but when you get a new use, they use 88 car variants, that has an impact. And that's not going to be the only one who's coming, because you have about four or five different buildings on Lighthouse Avenue, like this one, former furniture stores and so forth. They might come in for the same thing. So I think it's important at tonight's meeting that the staff schedule a study about the Lighthouse area plan. a study about the Lighthouse area plan and also the specific plan, because then we wouldn't have these here today, because 88-car variance, that's a lot of cars. So if I may say something about that, staff states that the Lighthouse specific plan for residents says encourage people to live, work, play, and shop. How can that be when the use for these events is by invitations only? That's not for local people, south side. These proposed parking is in residential area. A commercial enterprise use a residential neighborhood for parking? I've never heard of that before. I've never seen application for that. So when I saw that, I also did talk to the Kimberly Cole about it. I said, in these proposal, can I? In these proposal, I said, it's in a residential neighborhood, and it's outside of their influence in which you had the previous meeting on. So have the people in that area that is going to be affected with the traffic and parking been notified? I couldn't get an answer on that one. So I, I don't know if you have to have another meeting, because this one hasn't been publicized. I'd just like to see the answer for that one, because now the parking has been extended beyond the area from 450, from the project site on 456 on Lighthouse. So that's further in and further up.
Can you wrap it up?
Tell me.
Can you finish quickly? You've already passed your time, so.
Oh, yeah, I, I'm sorry, but you know, I've been here, and you don't have many. It's only one here speaking, so. But I, I just think that, listen, and as I mentioned before, within 400 feet, you have a 55-person senior assistant care units. And so if you have onsite activities, they're going to hear it 10, 11 o'clock at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, anybody online? Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Great, thanks. Any discussion?
Well, I'd like to ask staff if they could comment on the public notification for this meeting and the information provided, if that's all, okay.
Yeah, of course. Happy to. So the meeting was, this item was properly noticed for the project site at 456 Lighthouse. At the last meeting, this item was continued to a date certain to this meeting. So we do not, and we are not required to re-notice the item as it pertains to the offsite parking lot that they're entering into, the applicant is entering into an agreement with. That is an existing parking lot that will continue to be utilized as a parking lot, so there's no change of land use that's proposed for that site, and therefore doesn't require any noticing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we reviewed this two weeks ago, and it was a, we asked them to go back and look at a parking plan, which they did, and they've now brought that in. They found a what appears to be a reasonable location for these excess cars at 600 Hawthorne. And accordingly, staff has reworded the finding two to be met. So we have a draft, you know, approval that, that appears to be good, and I'm, I'm in favor of the project.
Peter?
I've always liked the project. I just don't think that it's ever been a good idea to put it in an impacted neighborhood. But having said that, the applicant did do what we asked, came back with a parking plan. I have reservations, as I maybe have alluded earlier regarding the impacts, even if we've looked at an 88-car scenario, which is what you were directed to do, and what would happen if we were wrong and there's impacts, and we've heard that, well, there's a monitoring program every 12 months. Or is it just a one-time thing, or is it every 12 months?
So it'll come back before you once after the one-year period, but at that meeting, the commission can choose to require the use permit to have another periodic review after another year.
Thank you. And with that monitoring system in place, I think that's a good safeguard, but I don't think that 12 months is good enough. I think it should come back in six months, because there could be impacts right away after a couple of events with a lot of upset neighbors. And for them to have to wait a year to have their voices heard, I think is unreasonable. So I would, I would modify the 12 months to six months.
Mike, is there a motion? I mean, we're making comments. No, I don't have, I don't have anything. No. You know, one comment I'd like to make is that I think this process actually worked out really well between the applicant with city staff and the commission, and together, all three partners trying to see this through. I think we've come up with a way of trying to see whether it's going to work or not. And I think Peter's point's a good one. You know what? We make it six months, see how it's going, and then after that, we can reevaluate it, including the timeframe could be a year at that point. Or maybe there's, you know, continued justification to make it six months, but do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval on 456 Lighthouse use permit with a modification to the.
It'll be condition number 12.
I'm sorry.
It'll be condition number 12.
Condition number 12 from 12 months to six months.
Do we have a second? Second. Erica, could you do a roll call? We have a motion.
I'll be happy to. Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otassa?
Yes.
Motion carries with a vote of four. The decision is appealable with attendees to the planning, to the city council with applications online or in our planning office.
Thank you, and thank you for your effort. Any commissioner comments?
Nope. Thanks for coming in, Peter.
Yes, thank you, Peter, for.
Above and beyond.
I got done with my heavy workload today, and I was in my car right at 4 o'clock, and I get the call. And it was perfect timing, because I was at a stoplight, and I thought, okay, I'll just make a left turn here, and I'm here.
I don't think I've ever seen that before, where we were just sitting here for 15 minutes, wondering, are we going to get a quorum? So thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you. Levi, anything for us?
Not much more than what's noted in your agenda packet. We just have the tentative schedule for the June 24th Planning Commission meeting, and we just have one item tentatively scheduled, and that's for a daycare use at 2400 Garden Road. And it looks like our community development director maybe has something else to add.
Good afternoon, everyone. The, you all received an email from the city manager's office about the potential discussion at city council to combine the planning commission and architectural review committee. I'm, I'm about 98% positive that that discussion will be on June 17th, which is next Tuesday, and so we'll make sure to confirm that in the next day or so and send you an email, so you can choose to participate at that meeting if you're interested.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, is that?
That's all I have.
Great, that's it. At almost 6 o'clock. Yeah, thanks for coming in.